All right, it's called this meeting order, please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, any citizens that are to be heard. Damon, thanks for getting that.
You did.
Appreciate that.
You have a question?
I'll read up on it here directly. Any citizens that are to be heard, hearing none. Item four, consideration of possible action on approved minutes for May 4th, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes, second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 The torchbearers are on their way.
Somebody check his finger.
I point for.
Wrap the mask back on.
We got one of those glass monitors. It's got one of the big bulbs on the end of it.
Yeah, call for it.
You did it, item four, you did.
I did, thank you very much. Item five, consideration of possible action on signing, nope, wrong line. Item five, consideration of possible action on approved final plat, we're cutting uh falls in northeast quarter of section 2415 north three west.
I've been wanting to ask all week, does George Bailey look good? Did he buy a house?
Isn't that funny? I didn't even know how it came about. Here's the locks.
Here's the piano.
Outside down. I can do backwards, I just can't do outside down.
You want me to do another one? I have one in my pocket.
You need to leave it with me. There you go.
Um, in the...
The standard questions.
Right here.
Okay.
The streets designated as private streets on flat are not dedicated to the public as public streets and will be maintained by the private property owners within the subdivision.
Awesome.
Good. You bet. I was just saying.
And y'all gonna help us with Bryant repaving it to get in?
Uh, I don't think so.
Oh, come on. It just needs a couple bridges.
Send them all public.
I uh, I think it's a good uh, good add to the county.
Thank you.
What are you putting in, what, 27 new homesites?
Yeah. Yep.
You gonna use concrete again or you going for asphalt?
I think concrete, I don't know if you know um Azalea Park just south of there?
Yeah.
It'll be similar to that.
I'm gonna approve the flat.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Well, good luck on selling.
Thank you.
You bet. How's market doing?
Um...
Still moving?
Yes, somewhat. The ones in Azalea Park are really good, so I can leave two just in.
Good.
See, right now it's hit a miss though. Has it been most than once this time?
You sure you seen these on over there, what is that, Timmy Hill?
Yeah.
That I have over there and you're really moving them over there? All the others there, I forget the name of the addition.
I think that's Chelsey now.
If that's Timmy Hill, okay. The one over there on Office Center that's uh...
Yeah.
We got some levels. Yeah, the concrete on that. That's pretty cool. That's good.
You put a tag over there for you.
Yeah, covering them up.
You do.
You've got another one to sell.
Right in between them two blue tags, mine, I covered mine and Marvin's, I covered mine upside down.
Yeah, there you go.
Can you give you some eyeglasses?
This is mine.
There you go ma'am, they're here, y'all leave them at the doors.
Thank you.
That one's mine.
Item six, consideration of possible action on signing, blocking motion proclaiming that May 14th, 2020 was recognized as epoxy. I don't know how to pronounce it.
Proxie, pro- proxie. Awareness day. Is there about, this is...
Ma'am?
Yeah.
You want these?
Yeah.
Just as.
See, we've uh, we talked about this uh at our last meeting during comments and announcements. Because it was yesterday, uh we acknowledged it. Uh and I do appreciate this being put on the agenda to officially do that. Uh hopefully if we can get it on there. Oh my goodness, we gotta type the resolution.
Troy, we don't have to read that just?
Again, we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, your email, but I typed this up on the letterhead and so we can sign it.
How unexpected.
And do that, so. Whereas, May 14th marks Childhood apraxia of speech day during which awareness will be raised throughout the state of Oklahoma about childhood apraxia of speech and extremely challenging speech disorder in children and whereas childhood apraxia of speech CAS causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children and whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apraxia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle and whereas without appropriate speech therapy into, speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia are placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling and other school-related skills and whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities if not resolved or improved and whereas it is imperative there be greater public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in the state of Oklahoma among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers and elected officials and whereas funders such as insurance providers, schools and policymakers are encouraged to recognize the critical need to provide adequate speech therapy and other services so that the impact of this disorder is minimized and so that thousands of affected children can grow into productive and contributing adult citizens and whereas our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Therefore, let it be resolved that May 14th, 2020 is Apraxia Awareness Day and citizens of Logan County, Oklahoma and surrounding area are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion with approval.
I'll second.
I'm on today late, but always a way it works out on our calendar.
And there were, well, we did recognize it last time, so that was a good thing.
We did.
We didn't, well, I have to call a special meeting on the 14th.
Thank you, fellas. So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, honor. Item seven, consideration of possible action on approving a resolution that set in $375 donation from Edward Neeson to District Two for 400, or 44.11 tons of rock to be placed on Red Bud Lane.
Yeah. $375 worth, that's what he paid us and then comes down to 44.11. I don't know if we can measure that, we'll probably get a little bit over whatever, but uh...
It's the county maintain room?
Ah, yes.
I move that way through.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Motion.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Item eight would be consideration of possible action on approving a resolution that set in $391 donation from James Chris to District Two for 46 tons of rock to be placed on North Burt Grant. I'll make a motion if it's a county maintain room.
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion with approval.
A second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Item nine would be consideration and possible action to approve a interlocal agreement with the town of Orlando whereby the two parties agree to work together on road projects in the limits of the town of Orlando.
Cool.
I think they're trying to get some uh re grants and what have you and they gotta have an interlocal agreement with the county to do so, so.
I move we approve.
Oh, second.
I would, and Monty asked me to send this to Lowell, Lowell has looked over the agreement. The way this agreement is written is much like the general agreement we did with Oklahoma County, it just says, yeah, we'll work together, but we'll have to come back with a specific on a, on a project. And I have two copies to sign, please.
And I think it ends in fiscal year, so we have to...
Yeah, June.
They all do that, I think, don't they?
Yeah. So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries.
Chairman, there are nothing for item 10 and 11.
Item 12, consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permits. They're all listed on the agenda. And then it looks like the majority of them is...
West Simmons.
Oh, change my, you know, all of them is in District One.
Cause why is that? That's that Cox K line, that's maybe yours or something, I don't know.
Well, all the road crossing permits say District One.
15-3.
Yeah, I move we approve, second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Damon, AC and everything working okay over there?
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
What, what, nothing? Putting up the extras.
All right, we worked on that, didn't we? Item 13 would be consideration of possible action on consenting items.
I do not consent. Oh, no, that's different topic. That was a whole different topic, nevermind.
Saying we don't want you to run back there for this.
Is that to help close the courthouse or what?
Actually, those two positions, the part-time position is the archiver, they do the scheming.
Uh-huh. I see.
They'll be called, I think they're doing much last few months.
Well, I think they're working on older stuff, trying to get in.
Fan has blown my pipe worker in. So I'm having a hard time getting it stacked neatly, is all I'm saying.
That's fine. We'll blame the fan.
Aye. See where it goes, yeah.
Transfer.
One of these transfers there, let's say why were transferred?
It says on there, it's a per- and vehicle.
That's what I was... So they back open the ground?
Troy, I was, I was asked by one of uh our budgetary departments, right, ones that we do budgets for every year, when they need to have their statement of need prepared for...
I haven't set that out yet, it'll be in June. I just haven't, yeah, we're still, we're still a couple weeks ahead.
Right, right. But I was asking, I said I thought we were gonna be done in June, but... They, they were anxious to get more money.
I had a feeling, I probably know who you're referencing.
Probably that name, District Three guy. I heard a rumor about that, he was wanting more money. Ain't no secret about him.
Well, I saw the monthly highway numbers right before I came over here and we dropped 10,000 from last month, so.
It's not as bad as it could be.
I was expecting worse.
That's right.
I'm holding my breath for next month, so. Officer reports.
She won't be here.
And sales tax was down a few thousand as well.
So...
Ran out of toilet paper, you can find one.
Has anybody figured out exactly what the lag is on growth production? On our highway?
I think right now...
Some people have told me 13 months and some is less.
I think that large month is when you have a new well and they're drilling and they're getting to pumping and then they start reporting. I think these others that are, are, I don't know, 60 days maybe, but don't hold me to that, Marvin, I'm not sure.
No, no, I'm just curious because, you know, people, I've been told in the past that the gross production that we receive today is from 13 months ago.
That's the way I understand it.
So...
I'll try to investigate that. I know there's a big lag on a new well.
But most of the wells got shut in about 10, 12 months ago because it got to the point where it wasn't profitable to pump that block stuff out of the ground anymore. I was just, just curious, because that, that will impact, that could impact also our highway fronts as well, so. If there's a ledge, that's gonna fall off.
I haven't had a chance to look at any numbers. I would expect that, that part of the 10,000 difference from last month to this month is just in motor vehicle collections.
And.
And fuel tax.
And fuel tax, yeah.
The motor vehicles, I mean, vehicles been selling, people's haven't rented months and selling vehicles the last two months, I said they sold more than they've ever sold in the past.
New beings.
I don't know if that's because they're getting their stimulus money to pay for the tag, or the interest rates for zero for, you know, seven, eight months.
Some good deals out there. Yeah, buy a new vehicle, go back there. There, back there. Hey, those heavy equipment people are really starving.
I forgot a minute. One of my constituents has a black Honda Impreza out there along Inni Morian, between Chocotown, Morian, and South Tacharo, playing there. And he discovered that he has one acre right there in the middle of nowhere with no access to the Lobe's, that local county. It has apparently since like 1909 or something.
That doesn't sound right.
Well, I understand.
It may not be the Logan County as the county. It may be school land.
I do believe it says Logan County Commissioners.
If he's welcome to give me some information, so I can look into it.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we, the county, when I say we, I mean, the county obtained over the years various little pieces of property that were given over for road purposes. There was quite a bit back in the day where a person would set aside a piece of land and contingent that it only be used to build a school, and the minute that the school was no longer there or being used, then it reverted back to the owner. So, when it comes to little things like that, you've really gotta do the research to see where things come up.
I think it's called assessor, and he said something about we bought it back in '09.
Is that it?
That's it, I consent.
I move we approve the consideration.
Having motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. 14 consideration of possible action on proven claims for payment for May 2020.
Dog here comes. I need a call. One penny over.
Over's over.
I know. Got a balance with him. I'm buying paper for 15 year render.
I make a motion, we approve the claims.
Second.
Having motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. 15 consideration of possible action on proven purchase card payment for May 2020.
Cool. Cassidy, thank you. Thank you very much for your mouse.
Now, that little card, it's come in handy.
It has. Give him that, let him get it for that truck.
We didn't use the card for that.
Oh, we did?
We used.
Hmm? They took a PO.
Okay.
I mean, it's ordered done, but it was done by PO.
Okay, $447.37. I move we approve. Second.
It's an expensive vehicle. That's a fresh one.
That wasn't one purchase order.
Oh, that speedy gun's all this mouse right there, Jen. Having motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. 16, any citizens having to be heard? Hearing none. 17, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners?
Um, that's circle number 77, the one that we put on our 5B plan. I believe we'll be able to get an SDPVR on that, and we'll need the 20% matching, which could be as much as 200 grand. And I'm gonna be looking to see if we can get that through CVRI.
Anything else?
I have another bridge that I'm gonna be, concrete such as that. I'll probably be hitting on that CVRI for about 120 for that. I don't think it'll come in over 100, but we don't know, so I need a little bit of flashy money.
What kind of bridge are you calling?
That's that one on Midwest South of 105. It's a asphalt deck. It is 19 feet, 6 inches wide. And so, what the thought is, is that, and I've had engineers look at it, is to add two beams on one side. There's plenty of room. It's right there at Guthrie Golf Course Lake. That dam is quite a ways off, and there's plenty of room in there and nothing in the way. And sell that and put a platform on it, studs and concrete. And we'll have a bridge that is quite sufficient and is also within the requirements on what a bridge should be in way of width and such. So it'll be, we'll be getting the specs on it, and we'll be bidding that out and seeing what we can do. I don't know how long it'll take. But I also already have one individual who is willing to donate a considerable sum to get that replaced. It's all part of the getting Midwest ready for paving, going from Highway 105 down to Seward. But it's just one, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So, that is a bite. And that will be a real good thing for everybody.
So you already got the road width there to.
Yes.
Combinator bridge, so what, that's a head wall on the bridge?
Head wall, the head beam needs to be, is steel. But I got an 8-inch, what do you call those? That, that head wall beam, that really needs to be about 10 inches. And so, that'll beef it up. The beams themselves, I forget what they are, 12, 14, something like that inches. But this'll be properly looked at, engineered so that it is what it needs to be. And then I figure we'll go out and get one.
Well, it sounds like it'd be more than just adding two beams and concrete, I mean, because that shouldn't cost.
Yeah, well, you'll have a couple of wing walls you gotta put in there. Wing walls need to be redone and such. And, and so we'll get the specs, we'll get some bids on it, we'll see what.
Alrighty, anything else, Mike?
No, I'm good. I'd just like to go, but we make sure and capture in the minutes, and that Commissioner Pearson's identified possible, possibility that there's land that may belong to the county, and that Troy, you're gonna get back with the board of commissioners on where we're at on that. However, someone's gonna follow up on it to find out what's going on on that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Well, open courthouse, we had a little damage with the big wind issues, and Troy's got a contract to work. I'll let Troy follow up on that.
So the metal fascia decorative cornice on the west side of the building, third floor, came down. It, it, it literally just folded down and stayed attached to the bottom. It didn't come to the ground, but it did expose the rafters and the beams, and it was just hanging there. Couple with age and the wind and whatever. The, the company certified commercial restorers who ACCO insurance had used to do some of our insurance work through the damages, responded immediately yesterday. They're over there, I don't know if they've arrived yet. They are going to replace any 2x4s that need to be done and reattach. They had to rent a boom lift. The, the cost is anticipated to be less than 5,000, which is fantastic. The rental of the boom alone was $1,500. So, they're supposed to be over there working on that. We roped it all off to try to, to keep that. And I'll go ahead and, and thank Chairman Piercy, because now that we've had to get a boom out here, he's gonna go ahead and take the old fly pole down while we have a lift to help us out with that. So that'll happen this afternoon as well. If, if I may throw one more thing out, we sent out a newsflash and some emails, and I think Chris put out, but the county did launch their notification, emergency notification system this past week. We've made it quite easy for residents to sign up at logiancountyok.com. When you get that right there, it says sign up. Click the link, and you can choose to sign up for whatever type of NOAA notifications to be sent to you, be a text, be a phone call, or email. Severe weather, winter weather, floods, that's been a project that's been worked on long with the sheriff in emergency management. And it's launched, and it's a really good thing, because as we know, no one lives without a cellphone anymore. So you can stay weather aware for emergency weather, especially in the springtime, at all locations, at all times. So, everyone is free of charge. This is provided to the, to the safety of the residents. So go to logiancountyok.com and sign up.
If I might ask, one other thing, if I could pile onto that, the other capability is, and you may have covered it, our ability to issue emergency notifications to a, a particular geographic area. We can target an area for like, when we have wildfires and things like that, so if people need to evacuate downwind, we can target that with this, with this as well. Also, if there is actually, as this term gets overused a lot in the weather, tornado on the ground and traveling, then we can also do that as well, you know, and put out an immediate alert to those people in, in that area.
It's really nice, because if there's something event in Crescent, people in Settling County is not getting it, so.
Right.
Because if you're in County.
Very specific. It's a targeted emergency.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a huge one.
I'd like to.
It's a great thing.
I'd like to say thanks to Troy, Sheriff Deveraux, and David Ball for their involvement in making this happen and putting it together. And of course, you too, Monty, you helped us.
And the IT department.
The IT department, thanks a lot. But thank you all.
Well, I love that stuff. We use it a lot.
I am. The website has done really well.
There's a lot of other things out there that our citizens need to be accessing in order to be able to get the information. I really like that site, too. So thank you to David, sheriff, and everybody that was participating in that.
Well, a few meetings ago, I asked our sheriff about our environmental investigator, you know, how many citations has it written and all this. So just a little quick brief, just skimming through here, we cleaned up 200, or they have cleaned up 277 gun sites, 632 tires, 103,00430 pounds of trash, and it just goes on and on and on. So, thanks for giving us that information. Sounds like it's really working well.
And accountability.
Wrote eight citations, several warnings, and when they write a warning, they let the people come out and clean it up, so. So it sounded like to me it's a little bit of a good.
Yeah, hopefully we did.
So thanks to Don and the sheriff and everybody involved in that. So any, any more comments, announcements by the board? Hearing none, 18 would be consideration of possible action on adjournments.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.